All right, I will call this meeting to order Thursday, April twenty-third, Timmer's Select Board. This first part of the meeting.
April thirteenth.
Oh, what did I say?
Twenty-third.
That's a good start.
Well, I struck it down.
Yeah, I did. Let's not skip to that yet. We have quite the long agenda tonight. Welcome everyone who's here. And first on the agenda is we have Kyle. How do you say your last name?
Needash.
Needash, from the Western Flood Plane. He is the Western Flood Plane Manager.
Yeah, so I'm with the Vermont Rivers Program. I'm the Flood Plane Manager for Rutland Addison and Chittenden County. Typically, what I'm doing is kind of working with the towns on bylaws like to get you in the National Flood Insurance Program, permits, and then all the way up to Act fifty and things like that. So I guess where we're at today, you guys joined the National Flood Insurance Program as of January of this year. So basically, the National Flood Insurance Program was created around in like nineteen sixty-eight, and that was kind of when private flood insurance was getting to be too much for insurance companies. So the federal government stepped in and said, okay, well, we'll make flood insurance available to these communities that agree to adopt our regulation. So as you just joined the program, you agreed to regulate your flood planes, the regulations that you adopted, in turn for federal subsidized flood insurance to be available for anyone in town. So even if you have an issue where you're not in the flood hazard area, you have a stream by your house that floods occasionally, your basement gets wet, you know, what have you, you can still get flood insurance or something like that. And then the other piece of it is when we do have a disaster, which as Gail mentioned, you guys were really fortunate in Irene. I think that's probably due to like the Timmer Channel is kind of your big flood hazard area. And then the other one would be, it's probably like the headwaters of the Wells River, kind of on the border with Middletown Springs, and then it flows into Wells. So that's another little piece of it, but really mainly along the channel. And so yeah, you're fortunate in that way, but if you were to have a disaster, FEMA comes in and would reimburse up to seventy-five percent of your disaster costs. And then, so now there's twenty-five percent left. So we so as the town, you would take seven and a half percent, and then there's another seventeen and a half. You guys were at seven and a half percent by joining this. Now you're up to twelve and a half percent. So you did make a jump in like the state funding to make up for that extra twenty-five percent that wouldn't be covered federally. The last piece of that, so now go from twelve and a half to seventeen and a half would be river corridors. So that's, we have a set of standalone regulations. That would be the benefit financially would be that and kind of just keeping development out of those natural areas. So that's something you guys could talk about. I'm not selling it one way or the other, but that's kind of the next piece to that. And then as far as regulating in the flood hazard areas, we're talking about things like you have eleven structures in the flood plain. I'm not sure exactly where they are, but they got to be somewhere down probably that way.
There are some in West Timmer, over the mountain.
So on that other drainage.
It's also on the Polley River, where the Polley River comes down.
Okay.
Those, there's a bunch of little houses. There's one, two, three that are, well, the other two, the two would be demos. And so there's one, two, there are about five on the Polley River.
Okay.
That's a couple of times, it's like even that Irene is plugged the COVID.
And then it's
And it started getting away, but we, you know, there was an extra, everybody, we got it unplugged, but it would have taken out. It's the potential for those are in, you know, if you look at them, you probably did.
Yeah.
You just don't, well, often they come back this way.
Okay. Yeah, I'll take a look at that on the way out.
Because that's the whole drainage out of that side. And then the other side, it goes to well, so purchase split.
And it splits right around here somewhere.
Yeah, on the backside.
Okay.
There's not those north and south. And so there's the west side, which has those two.
And that drains out towards Wells.
One goes towards well, one goes to Polley.
Okay. I got it.
This comes down, goes into the Clarity River.
Okay, and then the other side goes that way? Or everything comes this way?
Everything flows north.
Okay. Yeah, that's what I thought, that kind of whole basin being down this way, okay. So basically, what we're looking at, say, one of those houses, if it is in the flood hazard area, were to come in and be like, I want a bunch of improvements. So once you get up to fifty percent of what that building value would be, that's when you start getting into like more complicated things like going in the basement or elevating that first floor, elevating utilities. Kind of those sorts of things, recognizing that, hey, we're putting a lot of money into this flood prone structure. Let's make it so it's safe from flooding. Anywhere kind of up to that fifty percent is just like an improvement for the house. You don't have to go to the lengths of elevating or something like that. So that's kind of the big thing.
And for instance, if somebody, and they want to replace it.
So mobile home, that would probably just be like a hundred percent replacement. So that probably would qualify for that. Or you were probably like, so when this would come up, like if you got a permit, at that point, it would be contact me and we can talk about what, you know, might be best, if there's another spot on the lot that is feasible. Or to what elevation that should be elevated, or, you know, maybe it isn't up to that fifty percent. I guess each thing that you're going to come up with is kind of different in the little specificity of it. And that's where I would
Flood zone down there, there's old double, an old double wide, really old mobile home, so.
Yeah.
Anything that they would want to do would have to probably be.
And that's because what we just agreed to in January now, that's.
No, we had one.
Yeah, you have. Well.
We had regulations, we just didn't belong. Now they can get insurance.
Yeah.
That's what.
Yeah, the insurance is the big thing, and also the pre-disaster money is kind of the big financial benefit to being in the program.
Right, pre-action.
Then, like I said, the state has that other twenty-five percent. It's called the Emergency Relief Assistance Fund, so technically, most of the time, it ends up being flooding, but it could be fires or, you know, whatever, COVID, you know, anything emergency related. So yeah. I don't know if you guys have any questions, or I think I kind of hit like.
So the river corridors is the next step if we were gonna go.
Yeah, so that's broken off from FEMA. The river corridors are mapped by the Agency of Natural Resources. That's all in the Emergency Relief Assistance Fund. So yeah, that's independent from the FEMA regulations. And we have model regulations on our, there's like flood-ready Vermont, it's a big website, and there's all kind of information for what I'm talking about. And if you guys did want to talk about that, I could totally come to another meeting and kind of do a presentation or, you know, get you guys more involved there.
And do you see towns? I mean, how many river corridors? Do you know how many river corridors?
The river corridors here are going to be kind of the same as the flood hazard areas. So for you guys, it might be kind of like a no-brainer of these areas are already regulated, we're already not building near the water. It's kind of like so there's like the financial piece and then kind of the like natural resource protection, preserving the character of the town piece to that.
Yeah.
So your river corridors, the one thing that might come in more is the smaller drainages do have a fifty-foot setback. So it'd be like a lot of these ones probably coming off the hill here, you would have like a fifty-foot no disturbance setback.
Yeah.
So that would probably be the more relevant piece for you guys is that fifty feet on the smaller drainages.
Yeah.
I know we have at least thirty-five feet. I don't know if it's.
You have a thirty-five foot setback now, yeah. That would be fifteen more feet, so maybe that even kind of fits in well if you're already going thirty-five.
No, we did that.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, it's a good idea. I mean, especially with the erosion stuff and just having that buffer for more quality.
And the benefits are for the people to like there would just be the financial benefit of adding that in if we're already at thirty-five.
Yeah, so when a disaster happens, then it kind of would only be responsible for seven and a half percent.
Right.
Whereas currently, it'd be twelve and a half.
Right.
So yeah, that seems to be what gets a lot of folks, and sometimes it's the natural resources. I mean, boards are different, right?
Right.
People come from different backgrounds, but those are kind of the two main pieces to it.
We talked about this in the planning commission, right? somewhat, or no?
I think that's where we go first.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, Barbara, Noise Point, yeah, she would be a good person to talk to. And if you did want to talk about it, yeah, has my email, we can start that up on the team.
I'm saying we would go to our cleaning commission first.
Oh, you're, yeah, I'm talking about the regional planning commission. Yeah. Yeah, well, yeah, because Stephanie helped us with the National Flood Insurance.
Right.
Application.
Yeah. That's a big good time to do it. We're looking at the plan right now anyway, so. Yeah. Is there, like, like a packet that comes with it?
Yes, I can send a whole slew of things there. Yeah. Yeah, that's why I was just kind of coming to feel it out today, like where you guys were at, kind of explain what you did, and
Yeah.
where you want to go.
Great.
Yeah.
Does anybody have any questions?
The channel, when Irene came, I'm fire chief in town, but we were running around just to see what might be going to hell.
Yeah.
And when we came over top of the hill, I've been there for seventy years, it's the first time it became a lake.
Yeah.
And it did exactly what it was supposed to do. It let out so much. But all the water and timber built up in the channel.
Yeah.
And we've got a five-hundred-foot buffer around that.
Yeah.
And then it could only go out so fast, so chicken hook, all those places, the way Rutland
Yeah.
didn't get that full thing.
Yeah. That is a very good example, yeah.
That is sitting behind Melody.
Yeah, I was reading. I kind of went on a little rabbit hole of, yeah, that is one of the biggest, that one, and then there was the other ones over here somewhere. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, that's pretty cool.
Perfect. So, and it just held that water, then let it back out a little bit.
Yeah, and you're so high up in the water, that's really where you need it. Yeah.
Plus, we had a lot of volunteers that were running around making sure culverts were cleared out and
Yeah.
you know, ditches were clear.
Yeah.
Some towns didn't do anything. They just watched it flood.
Yeah.
Our local commissioner and fire department, everybody was at.
Yeah, yeah, and that's That, that's great. That's what we all, I always try to tell people, like, what you're really trying to do is mitigate those things from happening, like, oh, is this over big enough? It won't get plugged, you know? Is it like kind of a planning for that time? And that's kind of what I see all this as, is the least intervention possible to, for it to flood and, and everybody be safe. So yeah, I did, there is kind of like a sheet here.
Yeah.
You know, there's two of them in there, but that's just kind of like a guideline, like twelve key issues for flood plans. But like I said, that's my role is like, if you ever get anything, send me an email and we can sort it out.
And do you need the select board to formally appoint, need to be the contact person?
Um.
You know, if there's an administrator or something, you said, when I said I
Yeah, administrative officer, I think is the language in there. Yeah, it, however you want to do it. I mean, I'm fine with knowing that you are the person, or you're typically, it usually is the zoning administrator. So if that's you now, we'll just go with that understanding.
How does the board feel?
Works for me.
So we don't run into them again?
Yeah, that's another one, like if they don't come up a lot, because yeah, we could talk about it now, but the first permit you get might be in ten years or whatever. So it's always good to kind of have that, like, when it comes up, who do you talk to?
Yeah. Officer makes sense.
Yeah.
All right.
And then, yeah, I'll just follow up with Gail's email with some river corridor stuff, and we'll probably pull on the Regional Planning Commission, see if they have any. They usually make some nice maps and stuff.
Does it feel like we should pass the river corridor piece on to this planning commission?
That's where we start.
Yeah, I'm just making sure that Select Board wants to pursue that.
Good with passing stuff on.
Yes, then if you can send all that along to Gail, we can get it.
Okay.
To our planning commission.
Great.
It'll be lovely.
Well, any other questions?
And then it comes back to us, correct?
Right, yeah. The planning commission can adopt things in their own. They have to come back to them.
Cool, anything else? All good.
Thank you so much.
No problem.
Enjoy your ride home.
Yeah, yeah, it's a nice day for it. I'm up in Brandon, so it's kind of all
Nice.
All back roads, yeah.
Oh, wow, yeah.
Yeah.
It's a nice ride if you go the back way, yeah.
Yep. Cool, well, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Yeah, have a good one.
Do I need to, can we just keep going? Okay. I couldn't remember how we agreed to do this stuff.
It was just part of
He's gonna go right in. Great. All right, we have two sets of minutes to review.
We need the agenda first.
Yeah, yes, we can. Can we review the agenda?
I put a new agenda on the table there. Eric had a couple of things to add. One is a driveway permit for Lance Summers across from Eric's house.
Yep.
And we came up with an RFP for paving for the select board to look at, so they can have goods come in next.
That's awesome. And then the legal.
And then I just wanted to clarify that we're using the ARPA money. It was ARPA money that came for the
Right.
illegal for the So I have a report that's due on April thirtieth.
Right. For spending it.
So whether, you know, it's
Yeah.
it's covered right now. It right now just needs to be added.
Yeah, on the agenda. Sounds great. Anybody here who wants to get moved up in the agenda? Todd, I see you're below down. Do you want to go up early? Do I happen earlier in the agenda? You can wait. Done, great. All right, well, Lisa's cooling here, so we're all sweating. Um. All right, now we were gonna do the minutes. Two meetings that we're reviewing the minutes for Thursday, March ninth, our first reorganized meeting. And then our special meeting on Monday, April third. Any comments? Questions?
No, I think we're good.
We hear a motion to approve.
A motion we approve, minute.
We second it.
Okay, in favor?
Right.
Right, we have a moment for citizens' input. Now is the time, if you want to speak. Our current meeting policy is you have three minutes to share anything you feel like sharing. And now is a great time to do that. Can be anything on the agenda or
Sure, you've got to be angry.
Okay, yeah, Sherry.
I noticed that later on, you're going to talk about recording meetings, and I want to tell you how much I appreciate the school board has their meetings, so I can watch them because I'm busy Wednesday nights. And I think it's really important for people to, if they want to be engaged and to follow things up, to publicize the recorded meetings. So I just want to speak in favor of that.
Anybody else? David?
Well, one thing that is EAB part of citizens' content. I know it's on the agenda, but
You have three minutes.
Three minutes. Talked with Eric. Sounded like he wanted to make a plan to start flagging trees, and I guess he and I were talking, we're thinking, I don't know if you've thought any more about it, but starting down at one forty we're kind of way up. I thought I'd flag, but I guess I'm wondering do we need, can the, you know, the whole shade tree policy, I don't think we need to do that first, but
I think we did away with that, didn't we?
Well, we just didn't do anything with it. Yeah. But, you know, the trees that we marked that are they're in the town right away, but they're along people's property. I mean, do we just, are we okay with just talking to them, making announcements? I imagine we'll have to have something announced in the tails or in all the different places that we're gonna do that work.
Right, and, you know, if you know we're going to be there in a week or two, it's probably good for practice to talk to the people about it. They may see me putting a flag on it at the time of doing it, so that would be the opportunity to say this is going to fall down, we need to take it in.
I mean, should I make personal contact, I think, with people?
If you can.
Somebody should.
Can't hurt.
Well, I was wondering, is there a pamphlet that you, we, we could print and at least put on people's
Page form, but I'm happy to, we can print them off and give them to people, too.
I mean, not everybody's on the forum, so. And I wonder, it's like you have like the stretch of road you're gonna do, and you could just you know, instead of going to everybody, just pick those houses and let people, reach out to them directly, and then you could bring them that information, and then if they have time, show them that, you know, try to do it all at once, show them the trees that you're thinking of cutting down.
I was just thinking, if they weren't home, then if you left some information, it's, you know, hey, I flagged a tree, and this is why, and
Okay, yeah. Sounds good.
Be available, connecting the door.
Yeah.
The same.
Yeah.
And I think we will be born someplace not to tell like the whole town, we're gonna do it all at once, because if you don't do it and something happens, you're liable for it. I would say you would do it stretch by stretch, or
Yeah.
Right, yeah, just the people that are on it.
Yeah.
Right, the ones that are going to be affected.
Yeah.
We know we're not going to do that, I'm appreciative.
Yeah.
I would seems like that was something that you brought up that you cautioned someplace.
Okay. That sound good, everybody?
Yeah, that sounds great.
Okay, thank you. Feedback? Good?
So you're gonna tag them with ribbon or?
Flag it. We're debating whether to paint or not. I think flagging is better because I'm going to actually moving things around and you know.
Somebody absolutely loves the tree.
Yeah. Yeah, right, it doesn't, it's not.
Right, right.
If you're thinking on the more busy roads first.
That was a thought, yeah. Yeah.
At least show the one forty.
Yep. Yeah. And then coming down that way. Don't forget, you know, down the way, people, we could just close the road, right, and walk around the golf.
Well, those are, I'm
Okay.
Thanks, David. And if you want it added to the agenda, we can, we can add that to the agenda in, for the future.
Okay.
Um, and Gil, do we have any more copies of our meeting policy and procedures that we could just hand out for everybody? We can remember our policies and procedures for everybody who's here. Uh, we're in, in citizens' input.
I have another topic, but I could probably bow to Mark once.
Yeah, we're gonna try to keep it one, one, three minutes per person.
You're pushing it, Dave.
We got serious issue with the hills now.
Yeah.
And it's got to get resolved before something happens.
Yep.
And we're trying to work on it through the fire department to that we can, but we can't go there without police that have been threatened. But he was burning on a red flag day, which puts everything that you behold at risk.
It was trash.
Yes.
Trash.
And the trash, the neighbors say that, that he burns the trash and it goes in their window, so I mean, it's gotta be stopped, whether our sheriff can do it or I mean, Kevin said we're just gonna pay, please, if we've hired the county sheriffs.
It's Justin said, no. It's a state police issue.
So I might look through that as well. Make sure they'll come.
He just said that if we if we need to go request state police go with us before we go. And so they can be there on scene. We do what we need to do, and then the state police can find them.
How come the county sheriff?
I, I don't know. I don't know. This is what Justin has said. David may have a different answer to that, so it might not be so it might not be a bad idea to touch base with Dave.
We do have a solid rest ordinance, which prohibits
The burning of trash.
Right.
Can you tell them about the new health officer?
I, I, yeah, I'm going to be resigning as health officer, and we have somebody new who is in law enforcement. We're gonna make that recommendation to the state tonight, so then I don't know what the turnaround, I didn't for that.
But our problem is if you like to fire it.
The hazard.
It's a hazard right then.
But he's threatening us that we
you know, harm the environment, and I guess I can't put firemen in harm, I can't leave the neighbors in danger.
Right.
So I'll pursue that through the fire department, maybe come back. If we need some other kind of change in the town, because it's a it's really a dangerous situation.
Um, Melody right now?
And
There's a town threat of him driving without his license. He doesn't have a license, he's driving like crazy, too. So I am normal at Curry, because she'll call me every time she sees him drive, and I'm calling the cops. I called him once today. And I'm gonna call every single time. We don't need another Tommy Bell being killing somebody. And that's what's gonna happen if this person isn't controlled.
Justin is supposed to, and he hasn't yet. He's supposed to let me know where he is in town when he's in town. He hasn't done that yet, but
The kid's driving every night, apparently, he's driving his mom to work illegally. And he's driving past.
But it's something, it's not like we can go there and confront him.
Right, yeah.
Because he's belligerent and he actually wants to do harm. And, you know, that's, that's not what's needed, so I think I'll try to work through those channels, and then we'll come back next month and see. We'll see where we are, but it needs to be immediate, so if 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 the county sheriffs are responsible for land management and that, and he's unwarmly fascinated about, you know, how that should be handled.
Okay.
When he stays and get in, or something, something has to happen, they are putting people at risk and danger.
So Kevin is the liaison with the checks, the county sheriff and
Yeah, I can call David.
Hear this complaint, your concerns.
Fire department, with fire warden, when we put it out, he wouldn't put it out. He was ready to shoot people probably.
I don't even know if they still have dogs, do they?
Six.
Six?
They're coming in on Thursday.
Six dogs?
But there's a video that says we have six, so.
Right, sounds like we need to have a whole agenda. Okay, there's a lot here.
Six dogs.
Should we have this on the agenda for our next meeting? Does that feel
We probably should.
Yeah.
Wouldn't be a bad thing.
Yeah, we may be having another meeting in April. We can have it on that one, or we can do it in May. You can let us know.
I don't think we want to wait if we can
Right.
figure out a solution. It might not Figure out a solution, it might not be.
Well, there may not be something that the select board.
How do you know there's six?
Norma sent me a video.
Not the same dog passing in front of the camera six times?
All right, let's keep going. Um, this is important stuff. Anybody else? Want to speak?
Well, citizens from citizens.
No, I'll take it up.
Okay. Public Works Project. Half Grant Update. Who's in charge of that update?
And Stephanie has said, Stephanie has sent all the, the RFPs out, and so you're gonna get them back and.
Yeah.
So that we have, that's thirty days, yes?
Right, our main, our main meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yep.
Yeah.
There's one, one single engineer that's been asking questions about it, I don't know if he's actually been.
Right, the marble, yes, I've got one, one person interested, maybe. So that's great. Other than that, we're just. Waiting until our. May meeting to. Open all of the bids.
You have to rank them first, and then get together, it's a process, Stephanie will make sure we do.
Yeah. All right, highway, Eric.
Okay, so we are, um, Bill Paholes, we've been grading between um. Broken wheels, uh, the grader, and I'll talk about that in a minute. We've been fighting beavers. Um, stairs are in process in the shop. Um, not finished, but they are. A working process. Oh, some of the towels are painted and put away, the wing is off the grader, uh, we got the. Um, so that's. About it, we're gonna continue to grade. Um, when possible. I have to ask, and now I'm. I've been kind of a sticky situation because. We've had uh issues with that grader splitting wheels. So it'll leak air and pour right through the wheel. Um, we had to order two. Last time. Um, well, we had one bad one, we ordered two.
And you got one or two welded?
Well. We got two new ones, and then we welded, we had another one split. So. Parted around with it. To make a long story short, it didn't work. Um, but it's kind of holding air now, so I ordered another wheel. That's here and on the grader, and we have not yet been invoiced for it. So shortly thereafter, we had another one, but do the same thing. So we're at. I called and uh I ordered another wheel, so now we've got, we're gonna have four new ones. But we're up for replacing that grader.
Right.
Shortly. So my question is, do we wanna order? Two this time? Just in case. We have another split rim. Failure on that grader.
So. Four have been re.
We will have, we have to, we're gonna have to have four. Um, at this, we will have four at this, at this point. The problem is, is the new one that I just ordered is on the grader. And I don't know how much it costs. Cause windmill has not yet been invoiced for it. He said, take it. I haven't got an invoice for it yet.
But if, but if you order two more. Yours. That covers all of them?
No, you're still.
You're still gonna be one short.
Or two more, there's a John Deere wheel on there.
You're looking to do three.
Um.
So the six tires on?
Six tires on that, yes, there's a John Deere wheel on there that I do not think is. Susceptible to this rim split. When we were looking at these, trying to get these. I tried to get used ones, and there was not one on the east coast. From Florida to Maine. There wasn't one. So that's why we had, they have to get special made in Florida, there's a shop down there that takes a center and welds in the right offset. Um, it's a weird offset, that's the problem. So we do have a John Deere one that only works on the front. Because you can't, it won't, it'll rub onto that, so. I just. I didn't know what you wanted to do.
But we have no idea.
It's a, it's a gamble, maybe we don't need it. But I've got one that we welded. That holds air, so we do have a spare.
See, if one, currently you have one, the new one is flat, is that what you're saying?
The one right next to it went flat, so we had to pull it, and I put my spare on, so now we're running a spare.
Yep.
And um.
When's the last time you bought a new one? Prior to this last one.
It was a.
How much was it then?
I think they were like six hundred bucks for the painter, but with COVID. I I just, I didn't feel comfortable just pulling the trigger on, cause maybe they, and I called Reggie again today, he says, it was like, I need to know. He said, well, I'll call him and see if I can get it, and he didn't call me back, so. I'm gonna stop.
So we're probably. Looking at. Maybe a grand apiece.
I'm betting that one was six hundred bucks by itself. Yeah, so I guess I'm probably, if we get two, we're probably gonna be.
Twelve hundred.
Three hundred bucks or less, I would hope, but I.
But you're looking at your.
I think we do, I think we just get two. This time. And then roll the dice.
Feel confident in that?
Yeah. I think we should get two, I mean.
How hard are they to get more?
Well, it's two or three weeks.
Right.
To get them made. So that one, that one, he turned around, he turned that one around pretty quick.
Well, he had that one installed, didn't he?
No, they have to, he has to make them, because it's a special. It's a special bolt pattern, it's a special offset, it's a special center, they have to measure, it's a. Pay them that. But uh.
We weren't replacing the greater, then it.
Yeah, well, that's the thing, it's like. But we don't wanna be down for three weeks in the middle of grading season either.
Right.
You know, so I was like, hmm. I'll leave it to the select board, and then it's not on me.
Tires on it, do we just? Value when we go to stuff.
It will help resell them, yeah, he could say, look, it's got. Five new wheels, or we got four new wheels on it, and there's one brand new spare and one that holds air.
If, um, I don't know much about graders, but the new grader, I'm assuming we're gonna have same issue with tire offsets and whatnot, or will it possibly be different?
It depends on, it all depends on what we get.
Okay.
It seems to me like Champion had an issue with their wheels, because there was no used ones anywhere that would. So it seemed like it was kind of a thing, and I've seen. Now I've seen four split in the same place, and I. When I first started this, I got on the inside with it, tried to clean it up and weld it, and I started chasing the crack, and the crack was just kept going.
When it, when it comes time to replace that, I think we should probably do our best to either find a cat or a John Deere to replace it with.
Agreed.
Preferably cat.
So for in terms of the tires. How do you two feel about? Just going with two, rolling the dice, or? Going with more?
Not knowing what they are.
Not knowing how much they cost, yeah, it is an uncomfortable position you're putting us in there.
I was gonna say, what does the budget say?
I I guess I, where the two would be. Probably the.
And then if you can have that, you know, if we know the number and then we can either, you know.
All right, if he calls me and says they're two thousand dollars apiece, I'll say, we just, we'll take one.
We'll get it drivable.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. And I I was looking at the. Best or the budget, and we are a little bit over on gravel. Right now. I was wondering if we can take, we're under on salt. We've done this before.
Yep.
I wonder if we can take the, what's left over for salt. Use it. You're grabbing. You guys are okay with that?
Yeah, I don't see why not.
Other than that, I think that's all I have for you guys.
And then what about the summer's driveway permit?
Um, we just run through it, it's, doesn't need, it doesn't need a covert, it doesn't need any clearing, so um.
Bring straightforward, on a straight flat.
It's right, basically, they're putting a rate across them on Maristrens.
Okay.
So it's on the top of the hill. I know, hopefully he'll make, I'll make sure that they get that water, any water that is there, they'll get it to drain. Away from the road. And I'm.
We both know where, roughly where it is.
Yeah, they don't need to do any, no clearing, no covert. It's really, this is the most straightforward one I've seen.
Somebody's. Moving in second to.
Your motion to approve the summer's driveway permit?
I make a motion to approve the summer's driveway.
All in favor?
Right.
Uh, chloride contract.
Just need to send.
Okay. Was it pretty much the same?
Yeah. They ran out, and they need their signature too.
You got going.
Well, you tried it eventually, at the first time, just to see how it was gonna work, so this is. Renew the contract.
Do we have, do we? I remember things were slightly. Like I, I know I.
It's innovative on it. When we got into this program, just a year or two too late, when we first started doing it. They would give the towns equipment, now it's.
Yeah.
Well, if it breaks.
Do you have any feelings about? This? What we're doing here?
This big chloride that's put on in the center time that we can provide. They rent the big tanks from it, and they gave us something to put on the truck to. Shush it on the roads.
Basically, no stabilization, I have noticed. A lot less problems. During the summer.
Do you have any comments, Kevin? Good about it? Keep doing it, great. All right, really wanna make a motion?
And so we'll be.
All in favor? Okay, the McCoy Road Updates. One of you. What's going on, what's going on over there?
So. I talked to. Dale.
Yeah.
And he, and I did, I did not touch base with um. I called. Stefan. And didn't get an answer. I'll be honest, forgot to call him back. But Dale said that he uh is feeling that. Um. Driveways. Are being done. Before our town roads are being done. And. They're not getting done in a timely manner. Um. They're getting done that late in the afternoon. Uh, plowed, no sand.
Do we know the person who's currently holding that contract wants to continue anyway?
Was gonna call him and. Find that out, but I didn't wanna. Make the waves with that person. Yet. Because we're.
And is that under our ten thousand dollar?
It is.
So we don't normally go out to bid for that.
Um. Unfortunately, we're not out of the woods yet, and snow, I would like to think we are, but. We may not be, um, so I didn't know how much I wanted to rock the boat with this person. Not knowing. Where we're at.
I think it would be fine to find out. Whether or not they feel that they can continue to do it.
Everybody up to speed is Dale Ames called, and he was concerned about. Snow not getting plowed and the roads not being. Sanded. Cause he's picking his sap truck up and down, and he's. With a couple of the snow storms, either he plowed. Some, or the other guy that's getting sapped down on what used to be Russell Brooks, he would plow after his section. And then a week or so later. Stefan Torres called, who lives in Phil Hayes's old house, and said that Dale was creating. What's so deep that he couldn't get his car out? So I put these two on, trying to find a solution and. Spring came, so. I think you took gravel over.
We just filled the bottles. The road's not that bad.
Okay.
So that was. And Stefan said Frank is doing a great job. So we're getting.
I thought the time she showed, there was like three loads of gravel went over there or something.
There was some gravel that went.
Mike, that's a comment, I think.
I do, as um, I've actually, I was over there doing a Houston strapping detail. And the roads were in fine shape, and there were occasions when there were snow on the road and Frank showed up in a dining dinner. I didn't have any problems. Um, it is a very small road. So if there is a very large truck. Putting thousands of tons of sap back and forth, it's. You know. That might be something that the select, or the road commissioner may wanna have a conversation with whoever is running such a big grid, I mean, it is. Little more than a driveway, essentially.
I don't know what the capacity of the cover of anyway.
Yeah, so you can't say anything about it. You gotta, it's, yes.
But if he's, if he's complaining that the road is not, I mean, I was there for a month doing stuff, and it was, I didn't have any problems.
But technically. Um. We just wanna reiterate to him that that road, if he's gonna continue doing it, the road comes before his driveways.
Well, I think technically it's Phil Hayes that has the contract.
Yeah.
So you'd have to talk to Phil, and then talk to.
Bill has it?
I think it would just be a matter of a conversation, I just.
Well, whatever, Frank is the one doing it, so he needs to know that he needs to do the road prior to driving. Just make sure the roads are done before he does anybody's driveway.
I'll let you. Be in charge of that, Kevin. We'll uh go from there. We'll have, hopefully, no more snow. Despite what Kevin said.
It was, I'm just saying.
Oh, right, the procurement guidelines for used equipment. Oh, yeah. The um taping, yeah. I believe already been taping again.
So I have to change. I'm talking to Eric. Because you said that you guys put the eighty dollars a ton, work backwards. Sorry, right on this one, it's on the paving grant, the paving grant is the one that's, this is okay. This is the RFP for paving. One forty.
Okay.
You had me dancing in circles today. It's the, it's the amount of tonnage on the paving grant that we need to talk about. This is RFP two fade.
Okay.
And so this is starting at the Longford line and. Coming west.
Now are we milling before we do show and?
Nope.
No, just. No, just.
And this, we added the recycled asphalt product to this year. Cause I had a conversation with Tom this morning and I'm. Let's see what happens. That's all.
It's created shoulder material.
Yeah, well, it's not so great when it's in asphalt.
And so is there a way to test that when, when they're actually applying?
If you have a tester, yeah, you'd have to pay somebody to come and do it though.
Right, if the company thinks we're gonna do that, then. They'd be honest and upfront with us.
Yeah, well, they.
Anybody have any questions about this or comments? And it's.
We did last year's and just updated.
Yeah.
Location and the stuff and added the. Whatever it is then.
Yeah, some income. Do, do you need to? Put the reclaim into the? The graph or the, um?
No, there's no reclaim.
It said there's refunds of a mile of reclamation reconstruction.
It comes right out.
Okay.
One that's on the computer does not have that in there. I had that on her shift today. It's sorry, good pickup though.
I mean, yeah, I like reclaim.
We did reclamation last year.
Great. Go hear a motion to approve with that sentence struck out.
Yeah, make a motion to.
I'll second it. Well, I'm favorite. Bye, bye.
This is email to four or five paving companies that we know.
Great.
So. You have a question for me?
So this is gonna start the Wallingford Line?
Yeah.
And how far is it gonna get us?
Eight tenths. We only, if we only, if we don't get there. We don't pave until we run out of money.
We don't get the grant, it'll be a little under a mile.
It's basically the top of Cob Hill, somewhere on the curve. There's a joint there. That's just about eight tenths. So we're gonna have to go. Over it or before it, cause you don't wanna land a joint.
That's it. You can tell where we've paved to go from section changes, changes every year a little bit.
Hopefully we'll get the grant and then we'll get to pave a little more. So if we get the grant, are we just continuing down? Okay.
Yeah, then we're almost to the cemetery.
Okay.
In the cemetery area somewhere. We'll have to find a good place to make a joint.
Okay. Alright. Right, so did everybody get the used equipment procurement guidelines? I just, it really didn't change anything other than just like made it. Look different with how you read it. That was all I did really.
Done, that's good.
Yeah.
Did you read it?
Yeah, I know I, I read it. We had it live. Yeah, it was just like all one big paragraph and I just broke it up into. Several.
I don't recall anything offhand.
Right, this is just how we go about. The guidelines for purchasing used equipment. That's practices. More doing so.
You don't know.
We can have this one.
He's still telling me. I have eyes, couldn't read this thing. I copied and pasted and put it in a bigger.
Oh.
It's all the same words.
I did call the. South Hegan.
Oh, the chipper guy?
Yeah. That went about as well as we thought it was gonna go.
We need to put that on the agenda?
Basically. We're, we bought it.
Yeah. But it was advertised as two thousand and fourteen, bought in two thousand and six.
And he says no. Um, he said there is no lien on it at all. Um, he said that he is gonna try and find the paperwork where it got signed out.
That would be nice.
Yeah. Right, and I said that and he said that he would try and find it and get it to us.
Alright. Motion to approve the use equipment procurement guidelines. So. I have a second. All in favor? Yeah. Okay, the B2N grant applications. How's that going? I still haven't got pictures.
You checking your?
I checked at five o'clock.
I tried something else and I sent them two more times.
Okay, and the other ones I can't find are the pictures that you sent, the after pictures. I've got something from you that there's two black pictures in it.
That's from General.
From General, yeah.
I'll, I'll take more.
Yes. There's one that's over, class two highways, the paving and the other one is structures. They will be typed up. Um. They will be typed up when I send them tomorrow, but. If you wanna embellish why we're doing anything.
Yeah. People normally write more in these grants or is that pretty average? Like?
I think they appreciate less words.
Less words.
They're like.
Great.
It's a little.
Yeah, I mean, they, they know what they're.
They give us to put some words in.
Yeah, they don't want too much information. Less is more.
Well, Brian says he drives the roads, so he knows, you know, what permission.
Right.
I could probably think it wasn't get away with it much. It's like, why do I have to move more?
So there are pictures that will go along with this grant?
Yeah, I just sent them six times.
Well. Do you, do you need help making that happen?
I, I've done it. Probably a hundred times and I just did it a hundred and six times. The same age.
If you need like a middle person, like you send to someone else and they send it to someone.
I could try to someone for you.
You can send them to me when I can, I can reformat them for. Her computer.
So if you pop them in an email, they don't go?
I couldn't.
Could be.
No, he's not in pictures before.
You may have changed something on your phone. Well, we can figure that out.
What? Yeah, with a better camera. And XR.
Maybe I'll have, uh, Todd and Eric can figure out why the pictures aren't working together.
Yeah. Tim, Tim of town that will not tell about that, right? I mean, you sent emails.
You would think it would work. Well, let someone know if it's not working, cause it feels like pictures would be really important to go along with these, like one sentence.
I just sent them all to you.
Okay, great. By the end of the meeting, I'll know one way or the other. She said a karaoke. How long is the culvert that we're gonna be installing?
Uh, fifty feet.
Okay, that's good.
Probably should put that in, we should.
Yeah.
I don't know if you have to, but I was curious.
It's on the, it's on the bench.
And there, and the bench it does go. There's. Um.
We could put a fifty foot culvert. Instead of just culvert, does that make sense?
No, that's fifty by, but there is, he got an estimate for it and it's what gets set with. The grant application with the pictures and there's a map that shows the longitude and latitude and.
Okay. No, I was just surprised cause it, you're doing the, the height, but there were, I didn't see where there was a length, so I was just guessing.
It is on the little thing. I just didn't put it in there. Because he didn't talk to me about it. He just said, well, what's five foot, twenty six foot? But on the. The paperwork that you got from. Lane. The. Culvert company. So those are all okay to send it out.
These look fine to me. You wanna add anything? No, we're gonna add the fifty foot number somewhere.
I will.
Okay. Great. Do we need to vote on that or?
Going to agree by, can you agree by consent?
Agreed.
Next. Um. The V. More people.
Um. So these. These things here need to be signed. So. Actually. So this was the last year's components. Those are. There is a compliance thing that you guys have to.
It is.
This is your. Annual sound plan. For the highway.
But these need to be signed?
Yep. Those two man signed you. So this is the annual financial plan that we give to the state. This is the aid that they give us. This is what taxes are raised to get to our budget. And so this is winter maintenance and non-winter maintenance. In the past, it was sixty forty. But now it seems like there's more stuff happening in the summertime, so I split it fifty fifty. And this is the. This comes off in the sixth thirteen and this is the balance of it, so that. Our revenues and our expenditures, that was the budget. And so, and you need to sign off on this. And then this is the certificate of compliance that the road standards that we adopted in twenty nineteen. Are still in effect and never will abide by me.
But true, Eric? Great. Seems like they're quite phased with all of that work. We're ahead of schedule anyway, right? That's true. You guys sign those ones and I will send you. And this is all filled out?
It's not filled out.
It's not, but you will fill in.
I got it.
Did you?
Yeah.
Send it to everybody?
No, I just sent them in a text to him just to see.
Yeah.
Now this one is supposed to have the do and do not.
Yeah, I'm gonna take my white out. Cause he sends it to Eric, Brian sends it to me.
Yeah.
And if you check one. They both are checked. If you uncheck one, both are unchecked.
Okay.
There's a glitch in the. The PDF or something.
Yeah.
I just take white out and put it on my screen and send it to me.
It might be worth the email just to say, hey, these boxes don't work.
Well, it's been that way for years. I guess I'm not the only one that hasn't told them about it.
No, you can't email from a text. They'll see, right?
Click on the image and then you should come up with a menu and.
Did you have email on your phone?
I have email.
Alright.
I didn't.
Okay. We did budget, road standards, compliance, plan. We had the grant and aid. Did we sign all those? We signed all those?
Make sure we authorize. Matter of the sign this, so we can do the grant and aid for next year. That's what the stormwater stuff does.
Do you know all the, like the stormwater management and all of that? So. It's a lot to talk about, but if you're curious. And I was having the, or the Kevin or.
The, the short story of it is that the state required all of the stormwater stuff to be done. But they realized how much it was gonna cost town. So every year they give us some grants to help us do a certain number of segments. And we have a stormwater plan and we're supposed to have it all done by twenty thirty five or something. And there's certain, certain goals at different times in so many sections this year or someday next year.
Okay.
But if you want the money, you have to say yes with a letter of intent and then you have to file with reports. I need to talk to you about whether the reports got fired. Okay.
Yeah, I said.
Okay. That's one of the things I have to check on. The grant and aid.
Yeah, the database is all up to date.
Okay.
Well. That is, I got a couple of other things that are done and they have it marked on you.
Okay, well, and they get marked on that state map, right?
Yeah.
So does anybody wanna make a motion authorizing me to? Be the signer of the grant name.
Can make a motion, you are the authorized signer.
It's not gonna.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Alright. Any mutual aid agreement, regional planning commission?
That you got sent.
Anybody have any comments?
It's been doing it several years. So far, we haven't, we did a thing to remember is. It's there if we need it and we can ask another town for help or another town can ask us, but if we're not available, the equipment's unavailable. You're not bound to do it, but it's just a way for the towns to understand that there's a process.
And do you feel comfortable with all of this and you understand?
I honestly think we should do it more.
Yeah.
But that's, it's. Personalities are hard to. So.
Yeah.
But I think if you got the right two towns or two or three towns together, I think. The guys could make a lot more progress on some of these projects.
Yeah.
I'd like to see, I'd like to see this work.
Yeah, great. Any other comments on it? I think that's a great idea. So.
So you're gonna make middle and duly authorized agents.
And it's someone to make a lot of. A motion?
Most make a motion that. You're the duly authorized signer.
Second it.
All in favor?
I.
Hey.
It's not letting me.
Oh, my gosh.
There's an email, yeah. You're gonna, oh, no, not unless you, I should be Tim of town. I don't think you have my.
Alright. Is there anything else for highway besides these pictures that refuse to leave the?
Do you have a plug? You could plug the phone into the computer. We can tell them that way. Right, that's what I do with my cameras. I'm down.
See if it.
I might have a cord in my car.
When do these need to be sent by? Tomorrow? Yeah. But I, it is a. Sure.
Says it went.
Says it went for me six times.
I got a feeling mine actually did.
I hope.
Those pictures.
Let's hope so.
Hopefully they're the right pictures.
Well, that's what I'm worried about.
These are eighty I C files right now.
Yeah.
There they are.
Oh, you got them?
You got the culprit. You got one. I got one picture.
I gotta send them all separate.
You need like a tech support.
They got the new side of. Thank you. Pretty good from here.
Yes, send them all separate. Oh. We gotta send them all individually. That sucks.
I tried that too.
Alright, let's pause the. Grant picture. Problem for now and just know. Problem for now and just know that we will get them to Gail by tomorrow.
Now that I know how to do it.
All right. Financial reports. Anybody have a chance to review? It's so fun. I come in and I get to look at all of these things now every week. It's all.
And you're all welcome to come and look at it.
You are all welcome. This is that folder. Right over there. Go look at it, anything. Um, so we should put in here that we're moving. Money from. Uh, do we know that number?
Uh, it's seventeen, well, right now it's seventeen five nine four.
Okay.
So I don't think we'll use. I don't know if we can truck that much, you know, I don't think we'll have time.
You don't need to buy any more stuff. We're just gonna move all that money over to gravel.
Yeah, we'll use what we can and then whatever's left over.
Okay.
You probably wanna, cause it looks like we're upside down by seventy-six thousand at the end of this thing. But we're actually not. Because we gotta take this. One seventy-seven, right? Away from it or the one seventy-five?
Right. The paving, the paving makes it look.
Right, yeah.
Because it's two, the budget of a hundred thousand is two seventy-five, but that's part of the ninety. So when you look down at the bottom and our budget is six forty, it says we spent seven sixteen. Part of that is that extra two hundred thousand. Hundred seventy-five thousand.
Yeah, yeah.
So when you back it out, we actually have.
Right, we're not.
You're within budget.
Not as scary as.
We're doing okay. All right, does anybody have any other comments? Other than like. We're gonna be able to manage this extra help. These other line items that are in the negative.
Well, we got a thing, some of it's coming back.
Right.
Second half coming back from the town.
Yep.
Right, there was over ten thousand that in skies with the roads to work on the town.
Yep.
That shows up in the town. Not in the. Salways here.
And the fuel oil difference, was that because of the new building or is that?
Fuel oil.
We budgeted a thousand, but it was five thousand.
Yeah, that's propane and.
I think we put in the next year's budget. Hopefully we put in enough.
Uh, we're over on diesel fuel already too.
No.
They will be all right at the end.
Yeah. Right.
Well, what we didn't do was budget enough for electricity for the agenda launch.
Right. So there's some.
Can't figure out what's using so much electricity down.
And partly was there were some, were they using heaters in there at some point?
There's electric heaters.
Yeah. Not anymore.
Well, they, they, the, the guys were using, yeah, yes. Yeah.
Well, that's gonna be deducted from Morton's final paycheck, the five hundred dollars that.
Yeah.
Their electrician who's installing there.
Yeah. Does anybody else have any comments, concerns? Whatever this. Motion to approve? I'll make an emotion that we approve.
It's good.
There now, so if anybody wants to second it.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
All right.
Hi. Did you want to say anything else?
No, no, I'm just, I, I never got the email, so I'll have to check it when I get home. Dude. You can get this whole packet? No, not unless, no. The last email I got was from, from you.
Hey, that worked.
Yeah.
Apparently the universe is again.
It ended up in my junk, which I did not check that. I have one now because I sent it several people in this place, but.
Okay. There's a lot of attachment.
Yes.
And usually the day before she puts these papers.
Yeah, I completely forgot about it.
It's okay.
Drive fast, you're against the day too. Sorry, to P D Youngmore at Judy dot com. No, Judy dot Tinman. I know, but that was an email in my, I looked at, I saw Judy dot or I go and I said, no, that's not the right one. It's gotta be the next one. Yeah, I actually don't have a Judy dot Gilmore email.
Somebody's got all kinds of. Somebody's had a great time going over all of our towns. All right, so we. I did not know that you had not received that. Do you want to take any more time on this?
No, that's okay. I'll, I'll look it over when I get home.
Great.
I'm gonna send it to you. Thank you. I didn't typically a packet of trying to. Yeah. Yeah, I have to add a reminder.
Email that's told us, but I don't.
That how I got two of your emails and I'm not gonna go delete, take it out of my.
All right, um. We voted, we did that. Do you have one you want us to sign? Or no? I signed all those already.
Yeah, you sign them all. I make the problems when we generate them.
Yeah. All right. We did warrants and orders.
Um, what I'd wanted to clarify on the financial was the legal that was spent on the right of way is supposed to be of Arpa money.
Yep.
Yeah.
I. Feel that it should come out of Arpa money. That was our goal, use Arpa money.
Yes.
Regardless of how it ended. How does the rest of the board feel? We have to pay it one way or the other.
Well, I mean, it's technically this four nerve project, so.
It just was a failed.
Failed.
I can live with that.
So for use of.
Legal funds for exploring potential options.
Yeah, I mean, it's not the town's.
But I believe that it's appropriate. I. Chose to put the Arpa list review at our, on our next meeting because we had so many other things to cover. Tonight. As well as the follow-up list. We have a long list of things to follow up, but we could make sure that we all get a copy of those. To review for our next meeting, because there are a lot of things to go over.
Yes.
That would be good. Make sure Judy gets a copy. Is this the next thing?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, debit card guidelines.
Address, don't have to adopt it tonight, but at least that's. Something. Eric's been spending like a wild man, so. We switch over the domain. To the town account as opposed to being on Kathy's account and Kathy's credit cards and now. It's gonna hit the debit card.
We got to your site.
Yes, and basically what this says is you've got to turn the receipts in a weekly basis to be used. And I do too. Because then it gets posted.
But then the account is in your name, correct? Well, Tim, then your name.
It's the town of Tim of debit card and he has a card that says Eric Buckland, town Tim of debit card, and I have one that has my name on it. So you couldn't use it.
Correct.
You could have us, one of us standing there. But it also says that it's unauthorized, you're in big trouble.
I got the fire department if I need to go on vacation. What? I didn't say that out loud, did I?
And so on the. The, sorry, understand how it's gonna work on the. Budget. It's a debit account down here. So when the money gets put into it. It comes out of here, but once it's spent, it's a general journal that will apply. You know, the four hundred dollars he just got for tools will go up there, so it'll show up there and it'll come out of here. So at the end of the year, this debit account will be zero and all the expenditures from that will be up there.
Okay.
Okay.
It just has to, I mean, I had to write a check to put.
Right, you had to have a line item.
Because it's a separate account.
Right.
Because you don't want anybody having a debit account.
Yeah.
So there's five hundred dollars put in initially from the highway side and five hundred from the. From general. General side.
Um. And you have to do that by check? You can't just transfer it.
I want a paper trail.
Oh.
There's a check that shows when in here it came out of the general fund and it went into this account. If I pay the trail.
Is there something that the person who has the debit card signs, like they agreed to return debit card? Like we're signing this, but is there something that the debit card holder signed? We want, that feel important? I agree to return this.
Killington's credit card policy and they didn't have anything like that and then you took a bunch of stuff out that didn't apply.
Yeah.
Just call Jensen.
True, true. I feel like when I was given a company card, I had to sign some things that I agreed to. Follow these rules.
They didn't trust you.
So what happens if they're not, the receipts aren't handed in on a weekly basis?
Well, when I get the bank statement, I'll see that stuff has been sent and I will go to talk to, it's only him and me, so I mean, I'm. I know enough to put my things in. He's pretty good about very good receipts.
Okay. I, I didn't know.
If he doesn't turn them in, then the money, it will dry up and there won't be any money put back in account, so you're not gonna be able to spend anything.
Okay, yeah, I just didn't know if we needed to specify what might happen or just cross that bridge when we come to it. You'll be the. Privilege of using it will be revoked or something.
Let's see how it works.
Paycheck will be docked.
That's fine. Let's see how it works. If it gives me trouble, then I can never put two things in. I think if he wants to spend the money, he's gonna make sure a different.
Yeah.
So there's enough money in there for him to spend something else. Because there's, there's not that much money in it that he can't go.
Yeah.
He probably couldn't go by one of those rims if he wanted.
Um, in that same vein, I feel like we could, we could. We don't necessarily need the. Second sentence that goes into like how. The negatives of having it, we can just have the debit cards provide a convenient and time-effective method of obtaining goods and services for the town. And then go right into the purpose of this policy is to establish criteria for the proper use of debit cards when conducting town business. Don't need to give anyone ideas about. How to misuse it. And then, um, I. I don't know if it would be a matter of just having a. Copy of this that is also signed by the card holder user saying, I agree to. The above. Sure, when they sign it. Does that feel? Reasonable?
Yep.
Okay. Anybody have any other comments, additions? Do we want to approve it with those edits?
Well, why don't you let me?
Edit it.
Right, we can send it.
We'll sign and edit it one of the next.
Sentence that you wanted to add it there.
Uh, for the signing.
For the employee to sign.
Um, I blank agree to the above. Terms and conditions. Okay. Uh, anything else? On that one?
I think that's good.
Disorganized. All right, moving on. We have our annual appointments. If we have anybody sign up for recreation.
You know. Your recreation. They can do this. There's in the volunteer on the website.
Okay.
Jennifer. Oh, it was an inkly. She says, I'm in Ohio. Can I do it virtually? And I said. Her website, I don't say why not.
Jennifer, Jennifer.
You're.
She's here part time? Yeah. They've been spending lots of time.
Yeah, it didn't make sense when you said there's somebody from Ohio that wanted to do it and I went, I wouldn't.
Because they're here.
He wants to be taken.
That makes sense.
See, he will us. And he also wants to be taken on the emergency committee.
And so if you're resigning as health officer.
Yeah.
Then put Jeff Warful in there.
So I am officially resigning as health officer. And it is my recommendation that the blackboard recommend Jeff Warful to the state to be our town health officer. Um, I'm gonna make that motion. Would anybody like to second that motion?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Great.
Um, I can tell you that. Ray Pratt has agreed to be the emergency management director.
Okay.
And I know he gets officially appoint the coordinator. Matt Patriot called today and said he would be happy to be the coordinator and work the job.
Um, so we're just, should we officially dissolve the recreation?
Yep.
Somebody wants to be on it?
Unless you get a big tall.
No.
Dew and fry.
No. That's fine. Um. I was curious if we can consolidate any of these, like committees, there's just so many of them.
Oh, some of them are there for fun.
Yeah.
You know, like the town huggers and. Where's a pole and Inspector Lumber and Shingles, those people have been on there for decades.
Yeah.
Like the fence views don't do a whole lot, but once in a while there is this wobble. I mean, it's not like they used to do, they used to have to determine. Who fixed the fence on this side? If both parties had cows.
Yeah.
Then one would fix it so far and the fence. Now if you have cows, you're responsible for the whole thing, the other person doesn't.
Um. Yeah, just like the solid waste alliance communities and then also the solid waste and recycling committee.
Maybe.
The, what the. Solid waste and recycling committee is a town committee.
And the other one is?
The other one is the Southwest District we belong to. They meet twice a year. Virtually, because Pam Clapp. Well, sometimes she's here, but oftentimes she's, I know she's in Iowa, Ohio, where she does everything by.
Yeah.
So those are two separate things.
Just something they can think about, just, you know. We can consolidate people and maybe we could have. One.
I just want to keep the paper is still.
Speed study will be done pretty soon.
That's true.
Um, well, I didn't get anybody else to. So far interested in equity inclusion, so I don't know if you want to make that eight-member committee or just need two, they get for now.
Oh, I might have someone that might come to a meeting to see if they're. It's in June.
I think we have one in May. Um. Are there any other additions to these committees?
Freedom Free Library Trust.
That's.
They don't officially appoint them, the Freedom Free Library appoints their own. Timothy, Timothy's record there. He's currently the chair of the board or something.
Okay.
Um. I.
Meeting's over, my pen's out of you.
Perfect time.
See you later.
Right, at eight oh four. Everything, everybody, we still have more to do. Um. I have something, I, I have a link to put forward to the board. I. Feel pretty good about all of these appointments except for, we appointments except for one. Um. And I actually wrote something, but it's, uh. Difficult to say hard things, so I'm just gonna read it.
And it might be that's personnel, you need to go to executive session.
We can do that, um. This, this would. This, you know, this is about you, Michael, would you like us to go into executive session and talk about?
I would actually rather it not be an executive session. If you have a. If you have an issue with me, I think it should be aired out publicly.
That's fine, I'm happy to do that. Um, so I'm just gonna read what I wrote. And then we can discuss. And you will have an opportunity to speak also after I speak. Uh, so I. I'm frustrated that I am in the position of breaking from our tradition of just automatically appointing people to places they want to volunteer. Um, because of the actions and behavior of of one person. Since joining the select board two years ago, I have listened to community members share concerns. And complaints about the behavior of Michael Fowler in public meetings. Because of this, I was hesitant about appointing him to any new committees, especially one that focuses on equity and inclusion. But we as a select board at the time chose to give him the opportunity to participate in this committee. Since then, he has proven himself unable to help create and foster a welcoming environment, which is one of the goals of the Equity and Inclusion Committee itself. Through his actions, he has created a hostile environment where work cannot be done and where other committee members actively do not feel comfortable. And are unable to contribute the way they want to. And have since removed themselves from the committee because of this behavior. It is because of this that I believe it is in the best interest of the committee and community. That uh, we do not reappoint him to this committee at this time. Would you like, just this is about you.
So I would like to know, uh, what specifically, uh, what were, what were the issues that, uh, other committee members that can you, uh, state from?
I think the.
Could you state who they were that was having a concern?
I don't have to do that, I will just say that, um. I think the issue is that it feels that you don't actually believe. In equity and inclusion and the goals of the committee. And it is hard to get work done in that space. Would you like to open it up to other comments at this time?
No, um, again, I would like to, you know, you made several statements. And you did not bring anything up to say other than you have a, you know. You don't, you don't like me. And you don't like me on a certain board. Which is supposed to be inclusive and represent the entire Tinmouth Town. If you have a problem with me objecting to you being the chairperson. I have every right and I pose that right, because I don't think that you were the appropriate person for this committee. I don't think that. You just saying that you don't like me on the committee, the committee being the vast majority of your and my family. Is a very non-inclusive meeting. I have actually gone out and tried to find other members of. Tinmouth to join this board. And if you are, again, I would like to, I like, I would question, I I not, I never. I never wanted to be on the committee that was rewriting the Tinmouth Directory. That did not seem like a, that does not seem like, I mean, if all of the, all of the little subcommittees that were. Um, by their very nature, um, not legal entities. I, I stayed away from because I knew that they, that was not the appropriate protocol. So if you're saying that you were, are you saying that you were, you don't want me on there because I wasn't, I was following the rules, I was. Following the procedures. If you do not like me, that's okay. I have every right to be a part of an equity and inclusion committee. It is important to have more than just one monotone voice.
Pretty, I think that's our time, so.
Well, but.
There are some other committee members who wanted.
But that's not exactly, I mean, you're, you're like throwing underneath the bus here.
I'll give you another opportunity to speak, but.
Feels kind of like, kind of like a struggle session at this point, and that's, that's not fair to me.
I will say that, um, we could have had this discussion in executive session and I could have shared this with the other board members. There, um, this is not about, um, this is just about your behavior and.
Could you again specifically tell me what that behavior was?
Well, um, it feels like. The committee cannot do the work it would like to do because we are getting derailed by arguments about things we do not wanna. Aren't on our agendas and things like that.
If, if I may, if this has something to do with the term, um. Indigenous, that was a, that was a conversation that we had and Melody was there and she actually after the meeting yelled at me. And you both told me that I cannot, uh, call myself an indigenous Vermonter. You guys did, not me, and.
I just say those words. Okay, so we're gonna stop, we're gonna stop the discussion. Yeah, I forgot to turn it on, I was trying to look at the clock, but my eyes aren't that good. Um, so that is my suggestion. Put forward to the board. Uh, the goal of the Equity and Inclusion Committee is to create a welcoming and, um, inclusive environment. We are trying to do positive things for the town and, um. People feel unwelcome and uncomfortable and this is my suggestion is that. In order to make this committee, that's all is to be working on welcoming. Uh, in order to help it be more welcoming, um. We, uh. Have to take this step. Um, and I don't like having to do this, I'm very uncomfortable. Um, but I also feel that. You have to believe in the work of wherever you're putting your time in, and so. My dad had an example of, um, you know, you wouldn't have somebody on the fire department who doesn't want to. Put out a fire. And so you have to believe in the work to wanna participate. And it feels like that's sort of the sticking point here.
Are you saying that I don't believe in welcoming people through Tinmouth? Because that is what you just implied.
So I'm just gonna stop it there, cause I think we're just gonna continue to go, I don't wanna, I wrote things specifically very carefully because. This is, these are the words that I wanna use and so I'm happy to reappoint everyone else to their reappointments, but I will. I was really careful to not, um, I am doing this because of of your behavior in meetings and how you make people feel. And so, um. If there are any committee members who would like to speak. Um, you can have three minutes, I will start the timer this time. But please keep it, um. Simple and no personal attacks, please, you know, keep it to your own. However, you feel like doing that.
I actually wrote a letter to completely dependent of your letter from my day, you're writing a letter to. Um, that I was going to send to all of. So I will just read that, if that's all right. Members of the town to my select board, I'm writing to express my concern of Michael Fowler being a member of the Equity and Inclusion Committee. Since the inception of the E and I committee, it has been hard to have a meeting without pulling tactics to derail the purpose of the committee. Too much time is taken by this individual at each meeting with personal issues that are not part of meeting agendas or conform with the objective of this committee. This may sound incongruous, however, it is important in the early stages of development. That committee members fully understand and embrace the purpose of equity and inclusion with thoughtfulness and grace. I've experienced and witnessed these undermining tactics in other interactions and meetings with Michael. And feel as inappropriate behavior that should not be representative anywhere in our town governance. Thank you for, um, for your attention at this matter. Respectfully, Melody Squire. Um, and so again, I know it feels like a personal path, but I feel that we, we cannot as a committee. Be effective when there's some. One voice that very much dominates lots of times throughout the meeting. Um, with things that are on the agenda or such as this word that seems to really bother you. Native versus indigenous and if you look that up in the dictionary. It is very clear, it is very clear that we are native to this, to this continent. We're not indigenous as kind of, but I do not wanna get into that conversation, that is something that is already in dictionaries. So, um, so I'd just like to say that. For me, um. We haven't been effective because of the constant undermining and I would really prefer that us. Be able to move forward with this committee without that. You could certainly be there as a citizen, but, um. On the committee, it's just not working out.
Thank you. Would you like to say anything, Todd? You are not, you do not have to, I don't know if you plan to or not. You don't have to be put on the spot, I was just checking.
Uh, my thoughts are that I don't think that we should, um, there are not anyone from participation, um. There has been a clear pattern of. Uh, responding to ideas in the negative. And I don't know how to move beyond that.
Yeah. I don't either, this is. One idea I've had.
Any contribution. In the positive.
Okay.
So, how many members you got here that are on that committee? Two, three, four, five, five out of the what, the eight? There are eight on it?
There are eight on it, apparently, yes.
Can we still on it?
Sherry. Got off of it.
Could I ask a question?
Uh, you can ask a question, but it, keep it short because I would like to.
Like to know what. Uh, policy or what agenda I specifically derailed in the last year.
So, there's a lot of information, I tried to keep it short without like a whole presentation about this. If the board votes to keep you on, then we'll take the next step, we vote. To at least remove you for now and if you want to ask to rejoin, we can revisit it at another time. Um, but I would like to just keep moving this forward.
But that was, so again, you can't answer my question, what did I do?
I can, Michael, but it's. I did not prepare like a whole trial, I just prepared. A suggestion to the select board, so that's where we're at.
If you're coming before.
Put it on the agenda for a future meeting.
Anything to say other than you don't like how I question things.
And those, those. That behavior has been well reported and documented and, um. It can be all put together in a nice presentation for the full board to see. That feels important. Right now, I would like to move forward. We'll vote. And, um, if you want to take it up as an issue. We can revisit this at another time.
So.
Right now, we're doing annual appointments. I am basically making a motion that we. Reappoint everyone.
Did the.
Not reappoint Michael to the E and I committee.
Did the select board appoint these members initially?
Yes.
I was the first volunteer.
He was at the meeting when we created the committee.
Because I do think that including people and welcoming people is.
And I would love to know, I would love for you to come with your person who you think might be included and. I hope that we can have more inclusive committee, it's, it's, it's just about how. Your behavior is in meetings, it's really difficult and especially in a place that's. You know, supposed to be working on being welcoming and, um, a place where people feel. Like it's a safe space and it doesn't feel that way at the moment.
I don't feel that way when I go to those meetings yet, I continually go.
And that's great, uh, so we're going to move on.
We discussed.
Yes.
I have questions.
Absolutely.
So other than. The statement that the Equity and Inclusion Committee created, that's now on the town website.
Yeah.
What else have you accomplished?
Not all that much, we've worked on, um, we had.
That was not done by a committee, it was done by a board committee.
Okay, yeah, that was, that was what was done before the committee existed. It feels like we're a little bit hamstrung at the moment because having conversations is difficult around some of the things.
The difficulties aside with personalities.
Yes.
What are your goals, what are you hoping to accomplish?
Yeah, I think goals are, um, more community engagement, um. I mean, we, we, we were part of town day last year and I think it would be, um, something we would like to do again and more smaller things. Um.
So what does that look like?
Like community potlucks, getting new neighbors, meeting current residents, creating space for, um. People to feel, uh, you know, people new in town. Meeting people who have lived here and, and anybody who wants to meet anybody, I think it's also about, um. And I think words are important, so, um, people who've come from places that they don't feel like they. Um, they need to hear that they're welcome, um, so we say that we're welcoming town, but. You know, making sure that people hear that, yes, we really do want everyone here, we really do welcome everyone here, um, and reaching out to everybody. I think that there is more that the Equity and Inclusion Committee would like to work on, um. I. They've been working on, um, like the mutual aid, they've put together, um. Operators manual.
I think in looking at language and that. Sure that the language is more inclusive.
Yeah.
Did I read any of that?
We're just gonna keep answering your question.
So I've heard you say, I feel and I think, but I do have to agree with Michael. Unfortunately, you haven't really given me any proof.
Right.
So, I would like to make a motion that we table this for this month and revisit it next month.
And do you feel like having like the recording of all this?
Can you approve everybody but the.
I think that's fine.
Everybody else has to get postponed with this.
Yeah, absolutely. And I'm only making this suggestion because, um. No. Because I don't know what else to do and I feel like I'm in a hard place because it doesn't feel like. Yeah.
Since this apparently is gonna be on next meeting's agenda. Is it possible to get the other members here?
We could, I mean, I feel like, um, we will maybe have the next, well. Depends on whether we'll have it on the next April agenda or on the next May agenda, we could wait until after the next E and I committee and they can meet and discuss it. I think I'm, I'm mostly trying to figure out a way to create this space that feels.
Well, I was wondering if you wait until after the next inclusion meeting. Then maybe you and I could attend as well and just see what's going on.
Yeah. As long as we don't discuss any town business, nobody can talk about any town business.
Never been to one of these meetings, I don't know much about it.
Okay. Sure.
Michael, you're on record saying you don't believe in equity and inclusion. You're on record saying that in public. You don't believe it, you said that, that's all I wanna say.
Okay. Yeah. So. It's a tricky thing, cause it's a committee that feels different than other committees, because you know, I, people don't necessarily get on committees that. Yelled so strongly. About negatively about, and so this feels like a, a difficult position to be in. And I wish it was easier and I've spent a lot of time thinking about it. And there are, you know, people are compiling the videos and putting them all together and, um. And there are, you know, people are compiling the videos and putting them all together and, um. I would like to not draw this out any longer. I would rather just vote one way or the other. Yeah.
If, if we're gonna discuss it. And can other people participate in that discussion at that time? If you're gonna, uh, Jen, if you're gonna make this, then if you're gonna postpone appointing and then. You're gonna bring it back up again.
Right. I mean, this is a whole thing. I was really hoping we could just vote one way or the other. And then if Michael remains on the committee, then he remains on the committee. And if not.
I'm more than happy to remain on the committee and I actually volunteered to be the chair because there is a direction that I would like to pursue this, but I was voted down. You know, so that is showing that I have an interest in being on the Equity and Inclusion Committee. And so. I just, that was the last Equity and Inclusion Committee meeting.
All right, so. So you're making a motion.
And there's two motions up there.
Yes, that's true.
Metal, metal made a motion that didn't get seconded. Appoint everybody except Michael. And then Judy suggested, or I suggested. They appoint everybody but the ENI committee and then deal with it later. But there's no motion that's there made in second and so. Pick one of the other one.
I would like more information before I make a final decision.
Yeah. How do you feel Kevin?
Behind that.
Would you guys like to attend the meeting?
Yes.
You're welcome to both come. Who would like to come?
When is the next one?
The third Tuesday of May. I don't know what day that is. And again, I don't want to be in this position. It's not a personal thing. This is about, um.
May sixteenth.
May sixteenth. Gonna be. Next. So that was my idea. So we're gonna scrap my motion and we're gonna go Judy made it. Are you gonna make a motion that we appoint everybody except the Equity and Inclusion Committee?
I, I will make a motion that we appoint everybody and be able, the Equity and Inclusion one and so. We can meet in May.
And do you want to have this on our agenda after you've attended the meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
And while that. Especially. It's a public meeting.
Yeah.
Well, actually the select board gets three minutes. The other committees don't have that requirement.
I think we did, we did adopt those. Well, we adopted something, the same rules of meetings apply, so. All right. Would you like to second Judy's motion Kevin?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Hi.
Okay. Uh, moving on.
We.
We're appointing everybody except the ENI committee.
And Ray wants to be taken off.
How did I vote? Uh. You're gonna just abstain from voting on that.
Yes, I just wanted.
Ray wants to be taken off. Safety and wellness. And he wants to be removed from the Energy Committee.
Too late.
Already. Well.
Not what he wants.
Well, we want. All right, moving on. Website policy Todd.
So.
Usually going for those who have the. They can see.
Yeah.
Um, I'm not sure what the website policy pick were to get that there.
I gave him the.
Oh, somewhere in here.
Yeah, I haven't seen that because that was not my.
Oh, I thought.
Um, so what I recall from the meeting is the old website policy is from like two thousand one, two, three, say something.
Mm-hmm.
So. So Kathy sent it around to get updates and, um. Having to improve it and then we would post it on the website. Not sure why their stuff crossed out in the new version.
Yeah.
Well, I wasn't either. But that's what I was sent. So that I sent them the old and the new so they could see, like in the old one, it said there needed to be somebody from the select board, but the new one doesn't have the select board number. So. I didn't even want to point at somebody you can, I don't know, June, I guess, unless she wants to be on the website.
Would you like to be a parent manager?
I volunteer for.
Volunteer. Officially. All right.
So you guys have.
You don't have a topic?
No, no.
It's probably.
Meeting is not over yet.
Still a whole other thing.
I wonder, is the cross out from where Kathy made updates? I wonder.
I don't know. I'm assuming those are the changes.
It comes from the other version too. I'm not sure where.
Yeah.
See, this will be old. It was a webmaster, assistant webmaster.
Oh, yeah, because it's that one from the other one too.
Yeah. Something about rooms. That's what I found on the computer.
Okay.
And so this was what Kathy put together. And maybe she's suggesting that these come out or somebody suggested they come out. It went to two or three people, I guess. But if Todd didn't get it.
You're right.
Yeah.
All right, you had, you had the good, go, the gov thing to do.
Do you have any? Concerns, questions about our website policy?
I think the main things were that we don't have a webmaster and a assistant webmaster. So that's why that's going to leave and there's not a select board appointed.
Yeah.
Just to clarify that who is on the committee.
And then what is the dot gov thing? That's just our.
That's separate.
Okay.
That's a separate.
Got it. I see that name there now.
It's something the website committee wants you to consider and do. And I think we, you approved it last year, but we didn't get as far as the letter that.
I think what happened was the same thing that happened now, whatever. It's not the paperwork, didn't attend the meeting and the follow up never happened. Essentially, but we can get to that after you guys finish the website policy.
Yeah. Anybody have any comments?
I don't know. So.
Make a motion to. Prove it.
I was just gonna say, did the wind out things come out or did you?
I hope they come out. Yeah, that was my assumption was they were, but. Correct, that's how you read it was.
Yeah, it's Xed out. Let's.
Yeah, yeah. All right, I'll make a motion that we approve website policy. All in favor? Hi.
Bye.
Okay.
Can you second that?
Yes. Do we sign this one or are you gonna give us a new one to sign?
Um, let me clean it up.
Um. The dot gov domain, what's that about?
Yes, so, um. Couple of years ago, they made dot gov domains available for free instead of. I think it's five hundred dollars a year, no matter what the size of your government organization was. Um, so in June of twenty twenty nine. We brought forward a paperwork, um, just a multiple, I would say, we'll have us from metal design, um. Requesting that Timothée grant of timothet.co. Um, and it'll be sent to CISA, uh, which is the Cyber Security and Infrastructure Security Agency. Um, and they approve request to grant dot gov domains. And they are free, um, and they intend to keep them free in perpetuity. Um, we would still have to keep our GoDaddy account because our website is hosted there. We would basically. Be forwarding people to a dot gov domain, which is more secure and it lets people know that we are the official. Town of Timothée website. Anyone right now could get timothet.com and that or code or whatever.
Yeah.
TV, whatever the. And their websites. Um, so it was approved in June of twenty one, but somehow signing the letter and getting it sent to CISA never happened. Um, the steps for switching to a domain is choosing a name which was approved in June of twenty one, timothet.co. Um, determining our DNS host, which is GoDaddy, which we will continue carrying forward. And step two is prepare and sign the authorization letter, which is the letter that I sent to DL that Metal would sign. And then we'd scan it into a PDF and email to CISA for their review and then wait until they get back to us. And then once they get back to us, Zach, who just joined the website committee, will help us transition the website to dot gov. Um, so that it's better when it's sent there. When they go to the town website.
So it'll be dot gov and so. Dot org.
Currently dot org.
I'm fine with all of that. How do you all feel?
I know nothing bad. It sounds good to me.
I'm assuming that timothermont.gov is still available. Nobody stole it.
Uh, timothet.co.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, sounds acceptable to me. We just agree by consensus on that one. That's on. She can copy it then.
Uh, that's the one I think you've been signed.
Oh. Yeah, she's already wrote it.
Well, I said Kevin said it sounded great. Judy said me too. So I said Kevin, Mo, and Judy.
It is eight thirty-five. Sounds. All in favor?
I am.
There we go. Now we've done it.
Just in case they knew something.
Yeah. Okay.
Um, Cory Milan.
Yeah.
Um. We're on a local path of investigating dot gov emails.
Mm-hmm.
Um, for that select board. Um, I know with that, that was two years ago and we'll have learned to use Vermont. So what I found is that, um. Once the transition, so right now Kathy bought our GoDaddy domain and it transferred to the town reveals account. Uh, so we don't have that fully set up yet because they said, they said two weeks of transition.
Ten days, they said it would take to migrate everything from her account to the town's account.
Right. Um, but when I was able to log into her account, um. There's basically a myriad of options. Um, it seems like most of them are six dollars a month per email account. Maybe use Microsoft three sixty-five, Google Workspace or any other platform that has an email. With it. Um, I think when you subscribe to those. You also get, I know you also get other products. So like if you do Google, you get Google video and then you get Google Drive space associated with that email account. And with Microsoft, you get the Android. I'm not sure if you can get Office, but it is called Microsoft three sixty-five emails. So I can imagine you might. But like I said, it's six dollars per account per month. Um, so it would be at least four accounts, I would think. So just for your information, if that's something you're also looking to further, once the transition is complete, we can. Um, currently with our new GoDaddy account, they are offering Microsoft three sixty-five for three accounts. For twelve months for free, basically to hook you into the Microsoft platform. But it is. Under that rule.
I will ponder that. Can that get put into like, can that information be shared in like an email or something so that I can read it?
Yeah, I can share now somewhere.
That would be perfect. Thank you.
And the reason that it's been brought up multiple times is you guys almost like forward now that. Anyone can request information about females, which is not about conferences.
Right.
So your personal counselor essentially.
Public information.
That's why Judy has a Judy dot. Or Judy Timmer, Judy dot Timmer.
We gotta get it right. If he gets the email.
Yeah.
Judy dot email, Judy dot. And then.
Judy dot.
And our ways to set, if you have a Google or a regular, our ways to set up a secondary email like that and then. Forward it to your regular email and be able to reply with that email address.
Technologically sound, why I never changed it, but it's too complicated to figure it out. My life's not all that interesting. But wants to know about it. Oh. Ken, all right. Anything else Todd? Okay. Uh, we need to ratify any finding the. The redetermination of this CLA.
The stipulation, right? It got from seventy-seven to seventy-nine. It wasn't much of a change. It went up a little bit, but. Appeal it further and it had to be signed within ten days, so. The action you're taking tonight is to ratify metals approving it and signing.
Hey, I will be ratified for metal design.
Second it.
All in favor? Hi, hi. Hey, Doc MacArthur, the reappraisal. Give an update, Gail?
Doc MacArthur did the last two reappraisals for the town. And he retired a couple of years ago and then he decided that wasn't quite what he thought it would be. And because there's so many towns. That are needing reappraisals right now. He decided not a retirement and he said he would help a few towns with it. And Timothée is one of his favorite towns, so he called us and he sent us a letter and I called him right up. Um, so I just want your permission to open discussions with him and PBR to see if that's accepted with them. In some form that we can do that. We have money in the, for a reappraisal in a separate account, so.
He's an especially.
He's, he's, he did a good job the last two businesses he's here. He did it in oh nine and in sixteen.
A ton of towns and we wanna be doing it.
We can get somebody now. That's what we wanna do.
So.
There are some towns that are going out for five years and.
Uh, isn't there talk that the state's gonna?
Yeah, but they're gonna take a long time.
No, no, I know.
Well, I don't know who suggested it, but the tax department was taken by surprise. So they actually need to figure out if they can do it and how they would do it. So.
My goodness.
The legislature is famous for doing studies there. Studies, a roomful of studies of different stuff that they don't wanna make a decision about things. This one seemed pretty fast tracked to have the state do all the reappraisals, but town leaders just have to. Deal with all the landlords. The state's not gonna do it, so there's, there's a lot to be hashed out yet. But in the meantime, we do need to do a reappraisal because our CLA is below eighty-five.
I am fine with that, with everybody else.
Yeah, that's fine.
By consensus, or would you like us to vote, Gail?
You can agree by consensus. So I haven't got you anything. I wanna hire him for this and.
Yeah. All right, L E M P, anyone review and approval?
L E M P.
This is what Michael Fannin does every year.
And now Ray's gonna do it.
Right, he's gonna do it, but the support has to include it by November first, so.
Thank you.
Need to check this over for accuracy. Basically, I changed names.
My God.
You ain't got away with anything.
I got it. Um, so anyways, this is basically your local emergency management plan. It says, who's gonna be what and give an emergency and list what equipment we have, that list who has stuff. Stop stop shelters, stop stop contact information. We can now update this with the health officer.
Yeah. So excited.
And then there's a sheet here. I don't know. Do you know if Ray has taken the? What's it called? L I S something or others.
Yes.
Somebody that's taken it needs to sign this.
We're, you know, there's a bunch of these.
Yeah. Okay. So then we'll have Ray sign it.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, so. Oh, yeah, the. I C S four oh two, I C S one hundred slash. One S dash one hundred.
And you did two hundred, then four hundred, so that that's covered.
Okay. Um. And so we also. News. Hmm. National something other. I don't see that printed here, but. You're adopting that, too. It's basically if something happens, this is, for these people.
Yeah.
Help, help them figure out. The, the process, I mean, I think we have it pretty well figured out, we've been doing it.
It's better, it's pretty much.
Well, because there's been, yeah, so many emergencies lately with weather and stuff, it's, everybody wants to make sure everybody is ready.
Yeah.
We did it very well, but other towns didn't, so they're trying to get everybody to understand. Bringing them up to our standards.
We actually did it, yeah, I mean, when, when, when the. Nine one one down. We were one of the few towns in the state that actually. Went door to door. And told people they had to come to the fire department. And there was a mechanism.
Right.
That we, so all everybody, yeah, and. But sometimes don't, I think we're in good shape in this thing.
Right. So if you could adopt it. And then you've been signed, I think you signed on the bottom here.
Construction equipment is kind of broader, we question excavators and. And dump trucks, are we talking chainsaws and?
Basically, a list of anything we might wanna use.
Okay.
ATVs, your TVs. When it's time, it would be snowmobiles. We would kind of have a list in the front, it would also be if. The first. Catastrophic would be excavated, it might be, to get to somebody needing. Emergency help. Let's just have a list.
Mm hmm.
Uh, that, you know, that. May or may not be available, even tractors.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Okay, uh, we need the motion to approve.
And if, you know, if there's any changes, we can make them.
Yeah.
I will fix the. Pop office thing in there.
Yeah, but.
If you get a chance to look it over and if this, you see anything we need to do, mostly, I mean, it's. It's most like last years and it's like, everything I do every year with. Michael Fannin is going to win and change the names of his elected and who's. Stuff like that.
It's been a long time now.
I had, I did add. Ryan and. Cameron on there for having equipment, so.
Yeah.
I don't, is anybody else in?
What about Kevin? I mean, he's not in the department anymore, but. Kevin's got a bunch of stuff.
Did you ask them?
No, we don't ask anybody on here, we just put them on the list and know that they're good Tim with people, no, don't come up with stuff.
You may wanna ask them before you put them on a list, so.
Yeah.
It just says construction.
And then the vertical. All right, motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve it.
All in favor? Hi, great. Um, all right, we have the opioid settlement letter.
This is. Something that we need to just sign on to so the state can get more money from the drug companies. No, we needed to sign.
I needed to print this, sorry.
Somebody else. Ray's got, Ray's gotta sign the top. Ray's gotta sign the top, you're gonna sign this.
Yes, printed and then signed, I think, now.
So there's a thing that we got here, I sent you. We don't need to get any money, but we can check the box in there that the state can get more money because there's money, more towns sign up. It's gonna come in over years, so. I just thought probably we should.
Yeah, uh, I don't think she was able to see this. I, I will email you.
Get something at least twenty four hours.
Yeah. Going on, it's hard to keep up with it all, but. This is something that is, uh. Just helps the state address the opioid. Issues.
And if money just coming from the drug companies to help.
Yeah.
Undo some of the stuff that they're doing.
Right. And it doesn't cost the town anything. Participate.
Yeah, I was watching a safety training earlier about needles and. Meth labs and.
Yeah.
Oh, it's.
Problem. All right, so we.
Yeah.
Do we have to move anything or are we just?
Just need to, for an appointment of.
Okay.
Respond.
We, I make a motion that we appoint Gail to respond to this. Letter, second it. All in favor?
Okay.
Great. Uh, post all meetings on the website. We have this great option, and Sherry spoke to this, having the option to record our meetings and. Currently, just the select board ones are put on the website, but. On YouTube, yeah, um.
It's on, it's on.
Yeah, it's a link. Right, it's not on the website, right. But you have to go through the website to get to the channel. I think.
If you subscribe or have a book on.
Yeah.
There should be one somewhere.
And actually, this is Nancy, there are links to all of the videos on the website.
Okay, good. Uh, so this is just, um, asking. Just put all of the meetings that we have recordings of on the website for people in town to see.
That this is for all committees?
For all, yeah, for all committees and. And, yeah.
Yeah, I don't see why not, I mean.
More people, people watch them than I thought, for, yeah, it drove me to that, I was shocked.
Yeah. Gets more people involved, so motion to post all meeting recordings on our. Website. On our. I'm gonna get everybody confused. The seconded. All in favor? Uh, feedback forms, do we have any feedback forms?
No.
Uh, members' concerns. Um. Correspondents in mail, we have this artwork donation.
Stand. And remove. We decided to give you tickets for them. This is artwork that's in the. New Wellen courthouse. This was somebody's depiction of Tim.
Pretty great.
That the original hangs in there and this is a print that he got, so he's donating it to the town. It's gonna be in the old firehouse, I guess.
That's great.
It's the artist's rendition, she has some stuff like. Haying with horses, but she's got buildings that were not there when there was.
It looks like a highway going through that, was that a full lane highway going through town or?
Uh, let's see, I think this goes down to Dixon's or something, I don't know what she took it from. Oh, this is the firehouse. It's supposed to be going north. The school, this is a school over here, it's the.
Oh, yeah.
That's the driveway around the school.
It's right up there near Monet and the rest.
So anyways, that's.
Lovely.
We should acknowledge them.
Yeah, that's really nice. I'm gonna donate that.
Show it to everybody here to dig it.
Yeah, executive session. All right, um. Our next meeting, I do feel like me might wanna have another meeting in April. We have, we might have some. There was another reason for meeting, can you remind me, Gail? That has something to do with Stephanie or is that just not until May?
I don't think we need to meet with her until May.
Until May. Okay.
We won't get any of that. I mean, it's. It would be May anyway, because we wouldn't have any of the, um. The RFPs back, you know?
Um. Well, you might wanna. Have a quickie meeting, but what I recommended last time was do it on Thursday, but the. Speed limit committee meets on Thursday, the last Thursday.
Okay.
The planning commission is the third Thursday, so if you wonder the last. Week of the month, then. Have to meet Tuesday.
No, I thought we were meeting the last Thursday.
You are this night in April, oh, sorry, we're talking. And the planning commission switched. Um. But in general, the speed committee has been meeting on the third, the fourth Thursday, just because. That's when Jeff Worfel can meet.
So we're, the speed meeting is the twenty seventh.
The speed meeting is the twentieth. This month. The planning commission is the twenty seventh.
Yeah, that one's easy.
So we didn't cover things like. Our follow up list and our, our, our bill review, which we. Need to go over, um.
And there's always stuff that comes up.
Yeah.
That.
Always stuff that comes up, and we can decide if we wanna do. One long meeting a month. Um, or. One meeting this length and one meeting shorter me. Summer gets very busy for me, so I. But I also. Yeah. Appreciate, you know, being able to talk and get through things more often, so. Um, it feels like we need to connect and meet. Again.
So are we meeting later this month or?
Uh, well, I'm saying, I'm asking if you guys feel like we need another meeting, I.
Well, if we don't, we're not gonna have anything from Stephanie.
Right, we could not meet again and just have.
Should we just plan on two and?
When is the, um. What is it, is that ENI?
Yeah, on the sixteenth, so it would be after our.
After your first meeting.
First meeting.
So.
So we could plan on a second May meeting and going over some of these things. Although I do think, yeah, everybody reviewing the follow up list. Would be good because of the long list and, um. And we were at one point gonna go over the list and come up with like the. You know, the timing of it all and, uh, what, when things need to be reviewed specifically, because there's things that have to be reviewed every year, that is what I'm trying.
Well.
So, I mean, no second meeting this month, so we're gonna meet, our next meeting will be Thursday, May eleventh. At. Stephanie is, is the word right, as well. Do we wanna meet earlier if we're gonna be doing? Stephanie won't be at that meeting though, correct?
Right.
Okay.
But we will be.
But we do have to meet.
Bids at that meeting.
Right.
You're gonna be opening paving bids.
Okay.
But I don't think.
We're not gonna have time to do the.
We won't have time to do the.
Okay.
Design.
That'll be a special meeting, then we'll have to call.
Because you have to.
Yeah.
Have to rank them.
Yeah.
And then you have to get together and talk about.
Yeah, so we're gonna do that, it's a special meeting.
That would be.
It's something. Okay.
Great, so the ENI meeting is sixteenth May.
Yeah, yeah.
And so. May, the last week, week of May is Memorial Day. Weekend, week, the twenty ninth of thirty to thirty first, so you might wanna do it the fourth week, but.
In May, like our, our second May meeting, the twenty fifth.
Yeah.
Well, except that's.
Oh, that's the speed setting committee. Well, the fourth, the fourth Tuesday? When we meet then?
Twenty third.
Yeah. Okay, so we'll plan on two May meetings then.
Okay.
And we're meeting at seven next time, correct?
Right.
Yeah.